I'd like to call to order the workshop for the Mayor and City of Council, the city of Tonnitown, for the month of August, and ask Mayor from the town of Thoston to send the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What the attendance record shows, all council members are present except for the exception of Councilman Frazier. Our first order of business is a public hearing, the Developer Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for Section 4 in Meadowbrook. And before we open that hearing, I think I'll let our counselor give us a little background on what we're going to accomplish this evening.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. What we have tonight is, before we have our hearing, is a refresher on the Meadowbrook development, because it's been quite a while that this development has been underway. There's houses already built on the ground. And over the past several years, we have all been working to try to flesh out the responsibilities between a developer and the city. And we established that in the Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement several years ago. We amended that agreement in 2012 to extend the time period that it was going to be valid for, and then it just set. As you know, the market conditions have now changed. Before, there was no building going on. Now, there's the possibility of more building, which is something we, as the city, want to see. We want to see the tax base expand, and we want the buildings that we approved to be built. And to that end, what you have in front of you, and you're going to have a presentation with a lot more detail, I'm sure, than I can give you, but what you have in front of you is a proposal that the Planning Commission has already reviewed and approved, that would allow the sections of the development of Meadowbrook to be broken into subsections. So nothing new is being approved, it's just a smaller piece of the pie. And what you have over there, you can see the colored sections. Instead of a Section 4 consisting of lots of houses, you're going to have a 4A and a 4B. And that allows the developer to do one small section at a time, pay less money out, make sure the sales are there to basically survive for that, and then start with the second section. So that's the goal, the Planning Commission wanted that goal, but as with everything, the pictures are not just the only things, we have to have the words that go along with it. So the DARA that you have in front of you, the Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, that has to be amended. And basically what it does, and I could go over it chapter and verse when you have any questions, but what it does is it postpones the developer's responsibilities related to water to after Section 4A and 4B are done. Because right now, the way the agreement reads is, before any building can happen, we need to have recharge, and we need to make sure we have adequate water. And that was the way it needed to be, back in when this was written in 2010. But since then, we finished our Main Street, and we have approximately 100,000 gallons of surplus water, water that we already have developed. So we really don't need any more water before we allow the building. So we want building to occur, and then we'll look at the water situation. That's the main thrust of the changes to the DARA, doing that juxtaposition. There's other changes in there, and that takes out all of the old language, because the old language said that if we hadn't finished the York Street Pumping Station or Well 17, the developer could go ahead and pay for some of those things, and then we'd get credits back. Well, we did it all. The developer didn't need to participate. So we took all of that language out, and that's why you have in front of you what's called the amended and restated Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. If it seems like you've lived through this before, you sort of have, we did the same thing with Mead's Crossing. We made sure that we changed their agreement to take all that language out, and we allowed them to build their Section 1 before they have to address the water issues. So that's what the purpose of this is. To make this happen, you need to have a public hearing, which is tonight, and then you need to vote on it to make it happen, and hopefully that'll happen on Monday. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the developer and his representatives. We have Dick Hall from Meadowbrook Development. And if you want to take it first, I guess you can get up there, and you can introduce Martin, and go from there.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Marty Ricker, CLSI, has 61 pages of key details of our land, and he's chair. I'm sure you each want to go over every one of these. He's been working for the last several years with your engineers, and I think we have through all of it, and ironed out. Jim Weprich, of course, is now having them backcheck again with your engineers to make sure we haven't changed anything while we've been waiting. The economy is such that we're encouraged, you did 27 houses to date this year. Last year, I think you only did 25, only a year, year before 19, a year before 12. So we're encouraged that the community's going to be able to support what we're doing, but we're still a little tentative. We didn't want to go in here and put 54 building lots on the ground all at once, that'd be about $3 billion. So we're here to make, the main reason we're here is to ask you to please let us cut Section 4 into two sections, each with 27 building lots. That mimics about one year's of 23. And I think it would be very beneficial to us, obviously, because we don't have, we can lay out half the amount of money and get our projects started, get it over working. And we're going to follow up very quickly with Section 5, and then finish out with Section 6. The total of 131 lots that are remaining in this project, started out at 259. There are 138 houses on the ground here. And I'm pretty proud of the way the folks keep the community out there. I think the homeowners association, which is very active, architectural controls and so on, has done a good job. We all have our problems with fences and dogs and whatever, but we've tried to stay on top of them. So if you'd like to answer any questions about the existing housing projects, the main thing I want to point out to you on split Section 4A and 4B, your staff has always been adamant, and I think you folks have said it as well, that they want Keenan Street completed. Keenan Street exists here in the top-of-field development, and it exists up to this point from 194 all the way through the project to this point. When we build Section 4A, there'll be a through street. Now, that's been the goal, that street is wider, it's designed to carry a little more traffic, but we're already having folks in the community concerned about speeding, so we're going to have to be working with your police folks to see whether we can keep that all under control for the safety of the kids and the community. But it makes sense. You need to have these communities tied together. When these communities are tied together, it takes the pressure off of the main streets. So you know Baltimore Street, 194, if you want to go to Hannover, you don't have to. And if you live here, you can go out to 194 and go to Hannover. If you want to go to Westminster, it's a circuitous thread back through these streets, or go into the center of town and come back. So this is good planning, it makes sense, and we're sticking with them. Now, when you see the plans go through, and the work actually start on the ground, some of the dirt that's available in this area, complete the final grading, needs to be placed over here in Sections 5 and 6. So we're going to be doing that work and moving that dirt over here at that time, so that we don't have to run heavy equipment across the Grandview Street and break it all off again. So we're going to, that's a heavy expenditure, and that's why I've worked with Jay, and he's gracious enough to put this in the agreement, that we can defer some of these costs that we had until we do Section 5. Then this total catch-up, we don't get away with anything, we just get to do it later. Ask and answer any questions you have, and also, I have several copies of, I apologize, I don't have quite enough for everybody of the large size.
We have no questions.
I have.
Thank you.
Starting to get more copies. This details the future sections, the block down to the lower left-hand corner, shows the total number of lots we have each of the future sections. And we'll take a few minutes to look at that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Hall on council? Anyone from the community have any questions about the proposed subdivision of Section 4?
I have one question. O'Brien Avenue, was that part of the original, was that Section 2 or 3?
O'Brien was in Section 3, and is now going to be completed in Section 5.
Okay. Is there anything to complete O'Brien Avenue to get that connected?
Of course, you thought about that.
Across the creek, right.
No, sir, that was not my responsibility, that was been on the ground quite a while. Nothing on our plans to work on that.
My understanding was that at one point, that was your responsibility?
Um, sure.
No?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
We voted this property from the beginning, we bought the land in 1994, so we've been here since day one. I don't believe it's ever been on the cards.
Okay.
Thanks, folks, very much.
I'll leave the public hearing open for a few more minutes, probably till about 8:00 or thereabouts, in case anyone else comes to voice an opinion. Our next item is the review of the minutes for July 8th and July 13th. The regular meeting is July 13th, the workshop's July 8th. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Minutes for July 13th on page 2, under unfinished business, the third bullet point, Councilmember Frazier's name is misspelled, has an S instead of a Z. On the very next page, under Councilmember Reports, where it talks about what I reported, in terms of the Public Works Committee, there was no mention of Councilman Frazier being on that. If it were any Councilmember, it would be Councilmember Vigliotti, as he is our liaison to Public Works. Do you see where I'm talking?
About 10 seconds.
That's correct, yep.
Any other additions or corrections? Very well, we'll have those for approval as amended on Monday night. Also for Monday night, we'll have the adoption of Resolution 2015-08, the water allocation for August. Does anybody have any comments regarding that resolution?
If I may ask the attorney a question?
Certainly.
Jay, when are we going to see Meadowbrook appear on here?
If you all make the approval on Monday, then we're going to revise the agreement. You wouldn't see it for approval until the plans are recorded. But now you'll see a little different layout, so you'll know what's coming, not just what's...
So once we approve the DARA is when we'll see it on here? Great, thank you.
What else? All right, also for approval, we'll have the Developer Rights and Responsibilities Revised Agreement for Meadowbrook, pending any comments that may come from the audience, that'll be up for approval. Next, we have the City Manager's Report. Henry, what do you have for us this time?
Well, first, a little bit of announcement that the last permit for Creekside went out the door today, so that's finished. And so now, the only thing that we have on the book is Carol Vista 4, Section 4. ENR, that's still in progress. Unfortunately, I can bring it up to date on Monday, our progress meeting for that is tomorrow, so I'll be able to get how much percentage of completion that is. The water billing system, the bid, the RFP is out, we're already getting some responses. There's no change in the MEA grant. We sent out our signed agreement, and we're waiting for their signature to come back. Again, we're still working on the capital projects and capital equipment, and we've not done anything further with the receivership.
Henry, refresh my memory, what role does Habitat play in this?
Habitat is, they're most, they're interested in taking some of our empty houses and abandoned houses to redo those things and sell them. That's basically how the receivership kind of works, they get it, they, but they're only interested in the single-family dwellings, they're not interested in any apartments or any multi-dwelling at this time. So that's basically, we were looking for a receiver, and they are willing to, you know, work and be the receiver. If you recall, you know, the Frederick model, they couldn't find a receiver.
Right.
In this case, we have a receiver, we just need to work through the complications that arise. We're also, we're also going to go out, and we're going to go visit Frederick to see, get some information from them, as far as what they did, and what mistakes they found, or, and we're also going to go to Baltimore City, which they do have a working receivership program going, so we're going to get a look at what didn't work, we're going to get a look at what's working.
I was just, I couldn't remember what Habitat was doing.
Yeah.
Henry, on the lighting, in Rick's report, it says the grant has been finalized, and we're waiting for them to do something?
Right. We're, there's an agreement, that we've signed the agreement, and now, we sent that to them, and they have to sign it as well. And they, we haven't received it back yet.
Henry, back to receivership, is Habitat going to come before council at any point to discuss this?
When we get the program completely together, yes. We'll have to come to you to talk about how the whole program would work.
Hey, we'll need an ordinance.
Right.
Right. But one other thing is, if you recall, last month, there were some questions with regard to coming up with payment plans. And if you'll notice, you know, in our current one, what I did was I went and talked to the treasurer and said, you know, this is an idea that was floated at the last council meeting, and what she told me was, is we already have that program, it's just that people don't understand it, don't know about it. So what we did was, in this month, Tonnitown Record, you know, there's a monthly prepayment plan. And basically, what, we're asking the citizens to come in, and we'll come up with an average of their monthly, and then if they pay that, you know, the two quarters in advance, the third quarter will be the reconciliation, either plus or minus, and I think that's stated in here as well.
And our new billing system won't have a problem with this, these different programs?
No, because we're...
You know, people paying monthly and budget, and people just paying.
No, as a matter of fact, we're looking for those kinds of features in the new one.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments on Henry's report? You have any comments on any of the departmental reports? I have a comment in that vein, as far as the, well, it's a combination, I guess, of the water billing system and website renovations. You know, we've been struggling for, or trying for years to come up with a solution to allow people to pay their water bills and other fines online. I don't know that we've made any progress in that, but we might...
That is part of the criteria for...
Okay, well, very good, I'm glad to hear that.
...pay the bills online.
I think, I think that would go a long way in preventing some people from being late, because it's hard to, for a working person to get into City Hall, now they can always drop it at the mailbox, I understand, but...
I think they only save the stamp, you just drop box, too.
And they could have a drop slot, too. So anyway, okay, all right, that's what I want to know.
I got a question on Dan's statistics.
All right.
I don't think any other...
I was going to say, it's a bit much for us.
You know, Dan and I talked about this, and he said, "Well, let me know what they think of it." And, yeah, I mean, I looked at it, and quite frankly, it's a lot of lines, but, you know, you need some sort of interpretation of all this stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, my suggestion would be just to have him give us a list of like a couple, you know, the important statistics, because I think a lot of this, you know, may not necessarily pertain directly to us, but maybe just like a, you know, like a single fact sheet would better condense the information.
Right.
Just tell me how many hits.
Although it is nice to know how many hits from Brazil we have.
Yes.
Fascinating, 32, that's...
Brazil, India, the Philippines, Pakistan.
How many from Nigeria? I get three or four of those a week.
Prince is trying to give you money.
I'd just like to point out on the Public Works Report, just for clarification, so nobody's confused, the first page, number 6, that trash pickup is Thursday, September 10th, not Wednesday.
Okay. I noticed that, too. It confused me so much, I didn't want to bring it up.
I looked at it, I had to pull out the calendar.
I see Rick's been on vacation, and this, you know, I know what it's like coming back from vacation.
All right, let's move into the legal report. Do we have anything from you?
Yeah, there's a few things. You have my written report, so I can answer any questions you have on the 19 items there. There's three things that I wanted to highlight. I always like the positive stuff, like getting our deals done and things like that, but that's not tonight, tonight's negative stuff. We have a policy that we kind of informally follow, that before we initiate court action, we come to you to tell you, because you might want to know when we sue somebody for something, so when you read about it in the paper, or you get stopped on the street, you kind of know these things. And so these are all code enforcement issues, right? They always come back to code enforcement, people doing, making people do what they're supposed to do anyway. And we could sue everybody almost if we wanted to, okay? I mean, the idea is there's tons of violations, so we really try to get people to work and solve it themselves, and Jim Weprich does that probably more than he needs to. But there are some places out there, and we had that example we did last year, where they just ignore you and ignore you until you put the hammer down, and then surprisingly enough, they do it. Well, we have a situation on Bentley Street, and I don't have the number, and I wouldn't give you the number anyway in public, but on Bentley Street, there is a swimming pool that apparently is not maintained, more than just a normal not maintained, apparently it's a swamp. And it is vegetatively grown in, it has mosquitoes, it has every sorts of, like an ecosystem on its own. And so they've been contacted and contacted that they needed to do something with the swimming pool, and they have just ignored. There's other zoning violations on the property, and there's other code health and safety violations on the property, but the pool is the biggest hassle, the one we get the complaints on. So Jim Weprich contacted the Health Department, saying maybe the Health Department could do something. The Health Department said they'd be happy to write a letter, just like we did, and they wrote the letter, and that letter was ignored. And the Health Department basically said, "That's all we really do, we don't follow up with any court action." So at this point in time, it's where we always get to, that fine line. We can go to them and threaten, and say, "Unless you do by a certain date, we will," but then we really need to be prepared to do our thing. And so Jim Weprich has not yet issued that unless-you-do-it-by-a-certain-date letter. That's the question that you all have to wrangle with, is, are we going to spend the money? Because this is an expenditure, yeah, we can hope to get the money back, but it's like a police department, you don't usually get your money back for the money you spend. Are we going to take these people to court?
Could we go in and remediate the problem and charge them for the service?
Yeah, not for this. We do that with lawn mowing, we do that with things, but what you're really talking about is sending a crew into somebody's backyard and dismantling and pumping out their pool. So that is just a little...
Ground pool.
It's an above-ground pool. That's just a little bit much when you kind of think about somebody's rights as opposed to mowing their lawn for grass and things like that. And so we open ourselves up to, why did we do it without a court order? If we get a court order, that certainly we'll go in and do it, and then all the fines can be paid as part of the tax bill. They'll be placed on the property like a lien on the tax bill. But without a court order, we're just inviting ourselves to have problems, because just think none of us would want that to happen without a fair hearing, so you kind of figure it's the same way.
It doesn't seem like something we should tolerate, it's not something that's, I mean, it's causing health problems for the neighborhood.
It is.
We have a responsibility to follow through on it?
Well, certainly, but we've done, when we bring it to you, and I think there's this impression, at least from the council, that we bring it to you the day after they call us, you know, after we, this has gone on all summer, and we have tried to resolve it ourselves. We've tried to call them, we've tried to talk to them, we've tried to write letters to them. We are at the point where none of that works. And we ran into that on Baltimore Street over here, and we finally said, because you all made an authorization in a public session, that yes, you're authorized to do whatever it takes to take him to court to solve this problem. As soon as you did that, we had an agreement with him, where he remediated it himself, and if he didn't, we were going to go to court under breach of contract. And that worked, we never had to go to court. That's what I'm saying, is that you authorized us to do what was necessary. On Monday, you may need to authorize that. Writing other letters and everything, well, we can do that, but that's, that's not going to work.
I think we're past that point now. I think the success we've had with an or-or else letter in the past, it's, we're definitely warranted to do so again. I think Monday, we should definitely take those steps.
This property is not just this year, it's in previous years as well, you know, with mowing and not mowing, and so it's, it's a well-known problem, and they're not, they're just absolutely totally ignoring us.
Are we going to limit it to the pool, or do we want to...
The plan that I would have is the pool is the easiest one to get if we go to court. Real simple to prove, in and out, it's almost an injunction, and we'll get a quick hearing on that. But my plan would be to do it like we did on Baltimore Street, where we say, "By this day, we're going to take you to court over the pool, unless you work out an agreement with us." And that agreement would cover all the other things. And then give them a deadline of a remediation plan that we can live with, so that in the event that they fail to meet our deadline, then we can go on and do it all. And that's kind of the give and take on that.
One quick question, I mean, and again, I obviously understand why you can't say, you know, what, you know, the address of this place is. I mean, do you know anything about the owners? I mean, is it like an elderly couple living there, they're just incapable of being able to take care of their property, or it's just negligence?
I don't know anything, I mean, my impression wasn't, it was not people that couldn't, it was just people that don't.
And I'm familiar with the property owners, and they're, no, they don't, it's not elderly. I think this property's been abandoned.
So we don't know that anyone's living in the house now?
I'm pretty sure they're not.
Is there a way we can find that out?
So nobody's getting the letters, probably.
Well, that may be the case if they're not being forward.
Well, that adds another wrench into...
It's been quite a while, so I don't know how long the post office continues to forward stuff, but nothing's come back.
I like winning those court cases the best. When nobody else shows up, okay? I don't have a problem with that.
Those are complicated.
So that's something for Monday night. So, that's something for Monday night. If you want more details, I could probably write you up a memo or get Jim Weprick to write you up, but, you know, they are what they are, and if you want to go knock on the door, feel free, but that's, I think we're beyond that. All right, I'm going to give you an oldie but a goodie, and you're going to thought, we, we thought we'd dealt with this. Again, this is along the lines of code violations and things that just never go away. Red Tulip Court.
Oh.
Okay? I know, it's, it's another year, and we'll talk about it again. There's no new facts, so just replay the conversation we had a year ago. The property owners say that they have a right of way behind their house, the end property owner says he doesn't. The only difference is, is that I went out there personally and dealt with it and got accosted by the end property owner, which was fun. And the bottom line is, they did what we told them to do, half. They went and got their own attorney, and they paid money to have all the title searches done and everything that they needed, and they submitted this huge package to me, which I scanned very quickly, because we are still not in the middle, okay? All this shows is that they do have, if you believe all the stuff they said, a right to go back and forth. And if they were to bring a lawsuit, because I've talked to their attorney, it's a guy we deal with all the time, Attorney Bauer Sox, if they were to bring a lawsuit, we would be sued, because we have a property interest, we were one of the people, but we would be one of those people that basically say, "We're not involved." So, yeah, there would be court work, we're not involved. What they would like is they would like me to read their ten-page document very closely, and they really are angling for the city to write another letter. Remember my last letter that said, "We're not involved, go see an attorney"? They kind of want the, "We're not involved, I know you saw an attorney, we kind of agree with you, if you guys can't work it out, go to court." It's a little more complicated than that, but I really can't get into the details. The issue that we have is one of money. This costs money for the city to pay me to deal with this, okay? And I've already had the talk with the code enforcement officer about his budget, and he said he does not have money in the budget, because this episode last year blew the legal budget for code enforcement, and we weren't even involved. So, I need to talk to the city manager about how do you want to respond. We have an official letter, they want official responses, and there's no really other way around it. That is, and you remember the lady that came to see us, that's her issue. Her neighbor's issue is similar, because she is complaining that she can't get through there, because the guy on the end put planners. I, I didn't go look, because the last time I was there, it wasn't pleasant, so I didn't go again. But put planners in the right of way, so now they can't get back and forth. I don't know what that is. So, this issue isn't going to go away. I mean, that, that's the bottom line. Eventually, if we don't do anything, some things can happen. One, they're going to end up in the audience here, okay, and I'll be doing my explaining again. Or two, we actually are going to get joined in a lawsuit against the neighboring property owner, and I will have to spend time to go at least to tell the judge, "We're not involved." I mean, I can't just not show up. So, it's going to cost money one way or the other. And I just want you to kind of think about that. I'm going to try to talk to the city manager and the code enforcement officer between now and Monday about what we want to do. They're really requesting a letter at this point, and they'll be happy. There is, in my opinion, no pleasing the parties here, okay? There's no middle ground, there's no mediation, you know, he doesn't want anybody on his property, they want to go across his property, and I don't want to be involved. So, that's the three positions.
Are we able to see the document that they want you to look at first?
Yep.
And we can kind of figure out if it's even worth.
I have it.
Your time?
I have it all. And that, that's the awkward part, is that normally, we don't get down to the dollars and cents and pennies of the budget issue, but when the package is this thick, and I say, "What do you want me to do?" We need to figure what, what do we want to do?
Would you be doing this for all of them? Because you mentioned her neighbor.
It would.
Are you, would you be doing this for just one?
The one.
Resident?
The one lady, the lead lady.
Yes.
Is the one that has the attorney, who's done all the legal research and spent hours getting the documents. It would apply to everyone.
Okay.
Okay, not just her.
I just didn't want, should we decide, to tell you to go ahead with this.
Right.
Do it for this one woman, and then ten more come behind, you know, waving, "Do this for me."
And this is self-defeating, because I'll send the letter out like I did before. Remember the, remember how this started, was the guy on the end wanted to put a fence up?
Yeah.
And we said, "You can't, because the property's an issue." And we wrote a letter saying that, and I thought everybody was showing up to the meeting to say how wonderful that letter was, but instead, they showed up to complain, because the letter didn't tell the guy he couldn't use his own property. This next letter's not going to do that either. So, nobody's going to be happy again.
If we do nothing, and we get dragged into a lawsuit, it's cheaper for you to just go say, "We're not involved," right?
In a matter of saying, but it's, if, if I had to make my recommendation, it would be easier for me to write the letter that we're talking about, because that will satisfy the attorney who represents them. He said, "This is really what I want you to do," and then we're done with you, and he's done with them. He figures his goal is, is met. And maybe we don't have to deal with it for another year.
That's what I'm saying.
Really?
It'll still come back.
Until they go, until the end user moves away, or they go to court and get a quiet title, which, remember, we talked about this before, we can't do that even if we wanted to, because there's no question, the city had rights to that property at one point in time, but we're not a party to it anymore, so. So, it's one of those frustrating things where you hate to be rude, because you have citizens who feel like they've asked, and she feels like she's done what you asked. She went and got an attorney, she went and paid for all the research, and now she wants to get the city's blessing on saying, "Don't you agree." And as I said in my last letter, I agree all hundred percent, but it's not my decision. You need to get a circuit court judge to decide, so. So, I will, what I will attempt to do is I will get some of that package that you would want to read. I'm sure you don't want to read the opinions and things like that, and get it to Clara, and scan it, we can email it to you all, and then you can see what they're saying at least, and enjoy it as well. All right, one last thing.
Before you do that one last thing.
We don't have to say anything definitive on that Monday. Okay.
Before you do that one last thing, I'm going to close the public hearing for Meadowbrook, unless there's any other comments. Speak now and for everyone, your piece. All right, clear the public hearing for Meadowbrook to be closed. Okay, now you can.
Okay, my last positive thing for you all, it's later on the agenda, but I'll explain it now. If you ever saw the movie Pirates of the Caribbean, where Johnny Depp is in the jail cell, and the guy lets him out, and he says, "It's always just a proper, proper use of leverage that gets things done," and he pops the jail cell bar out. And I know I fought with the council last month about Dollar General and the letter of credit, okay? And I told you that the owner really hadn't pushed at all, he just came to us, because we were the easy target, give me my money back. And I said, "No, we should write the letter," and we went round and round. Jim Weprick did write the letter after the direction of you all last month, and two weeks later, we got the thing signed. So, it was the proper use of leverage. His several hundred thousand dollar letter of credit was on the line, and so, what you have later today, which you'll do on Monday, is you can now release the Dollar General letter of credit, because he did what we asked him to do for an entire year, because you guys held your ground. So, we should remember that, that people do notice what we do here. Anyway, that's all I have, unless you have specific things on my report.
Can I get some memory jugs?
Sure.
Number two.
Number two. Creechside is supposed to, let me see which one that is. Creechside is supposed to build the sidewalk along Baltimore Street.
Okay.
And we met with the property owners, and there was a new property owner, and they were supposed to put stakes on the ground, and all of us were supposed to go see what it really is going to look like, where that sidewalk and the bank is going to be. And they said they were going to do it this summer. That was in like May.
The stakes are in.
The stakes are in. So, now it's just a matter of everybody saying they're okay with where the sidewalk will be. That's that.
Number three?
That one just got resolved today. The, there was outstanding liens, and, you know, we don't transfer property lien releases until somebody pays the liens, and there were, I forget, we're talking thousands of dollars of outstanding fines, basically mowing fines on foreclosed houses. And so, the attorney submitted his paperwork and said, "Hey, you never filed an official lien," whatever that in his parlance meant, "and we don't want to pay any of these things." And so, we said, "Well, we're going to look at what the fines are," and we collected, I don't know, it was four or five thousand dollars worth of fines. What we didn't collect was like the compounded fines, where you say, "Well, it's thirty dollars a day." I mean, that's a little excessive at that point. So, that one just got resolved today.
And number ten?
There is a list that the state maintains through the Department of Labor and Licensing, which is a foreclosure list. When a property goes and gets foreclosed on, and it, it's already had its court hearing, so it's not the filing of a foreclosure, but the court hearing has been occurred, and they've adjudicated the thing foreclosed. From then until settlement, the, the foreclosing party, so like the bank, has to put the property on this foreclosure list, that you can search to make sure it's on there. That would allow us to see who the proper party is, to avoid what I just described before, where we can say, "Hey, you're not on the list, so how could we tell you?" Or, "You are on the list, and you owe fourteen thousand dollars worth of fines, don't come in here without that." The issue is, that is not a public list. That's not something anyone can access over the internet. You have to have a special approval to do that, and you have to work for a local government or a state agency. So, when I tried to do that, they said, "No problem, but we need to get a letter from the city saying we need, you're going to allow access." And then I said, "Well, wouldn't it be a great thing if the code enforcement and the treasurer's office also had access, so that they could see when these things were done?" And so, that's what that is, is they're waiting for me to write the letter and get Henry's signature on it.
By the way, sidewalk. Storage units on Antrim. Put one in.
There's, there's one there. You can talk to the chairman of the planning commission. You might need a decompression stop after you go down deep enough on that sidewalk, but it, it is there.
I'm down the wall, wait, wait.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised. You know, one day, here's, you know, stakes, and then they poured it, and it's there. Doesn't go anywhere, but it's there.
Leverage.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments for Jay?
No.
Question on the.
Thank you, sir.
Jay, question on the get-together with Frederick on that receivership ordinance. Have we made any progress with that?
I think that it needs to be king to king, so either city manager to city manager or mayor to mayor. I can call the attorney, but they really, to make people hop, it's got to be one of those departments.
So, do you want to come?
Huh?
So, do you want to take the lead?
Well, I, we'll need to talk about it tomorrow.
Oh.
And we're wait, been waiting for, see S, CLSI's description of the Bolger Park.
Yeah, I get an email every now and then saying, "Are we ready?" And, um, yeah, we're ready, but.
We received the Project Open Space Grant for the money to lay out the trails on that.
Right, we really need it annexed in, so that our planning commission can approve it. It really cannot go forward till then. So, that's a matter of pushing CLSI. We should have said something when Martin was here, but maybe next time, we should have said something when Dick was here. Maybe on Monday night, we bring it up again.
Any unfinished business? Then we'll move into the monthly financial report. Any questions on the monthly financial report? None will be for approval on Monday. Next, we have the accounts payable. Any questions on the accounts payable? None will have those for approval. Also, approval for Monday, I've, in the back of the book, there's a list of all the new committee appointments for the new fiscal year. I'd like you to approve those for me on Monday night. Also, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain any better suggestions. You also see the border and sewer committee appointments. This was a result of the action taken last council meeting to establish this committee. And perhaps I can ask Mayor Pro Tim Foster to review the first meeting of that said committee.
Yes, we met yesterday at 10:00 AM in the office here in City Council, and all members were present, except Councilman Frazier. We laid out some ground rules for the committee, and Councilman Vigliotti graciously agreed to be the recording secretary for the committee. We had, excuse me, we had a meeting that lasted about an hour and a half, and we had some good brainstorming and ideas. A couple of us have responsibilities to bring some information back to the committee next Tuesday. The committee is meeting here every Tuesday through the end of September at 10:00 AM. We had one member from the public present. That's about it.
Thank you, Diane. And you discussed the release of the letter of credit from Dollar General, which is the other item there. I had a, I guess this will fit in here, I had a letter requesting support of a kayak and canoe launching site at Bridgeport on the Monocacy. And what this is for is Carroll County and Frederick County jointly pooled their project open space funds, and are going to develop a, I think it's about a five-and-a-half acre spot right there. I assume it's where that state highway land is, right as you cross the Monocacy going into Frederick County. And it'll be an area to launch kayaks and canoes, which is kind of an exciting thing, because it, it certainly will draw traffic through town and into our businesses. So, I, I'm planning to write a letter of support, unless somebody doesn't want me to. So, that, it won't cost us anything, anyway. It's county money, a joint venture between Frederick and Carroll, so that's, that's exciting news. I'm particularly happy with that. Anyone else have anything to bring up before the council tonight? Anyone from the community like to say anything? Marvin?
Could you give us an example of papers on the water committee that you visited?
Yes. The water committee consists of Chairman Air Pro Tim, Diane Foster, Councilman Vigliotti, Councilman Frazier, Barbara Cook, Gail Wilson, and Jackie Jones, all eager to help. I participated in the first part of that meeting yesterday, and I think, I think we'll be able to thoroughly examine the issue, I'll put it that way. I'm not sure what the results will be, but we'll thoroughly have the issue examined, because there's a lot of talent on that committee.
Diane did an excellent job, Stuart.
Thank you.
On both sides of Middle Street and 140, the brick sidewalks, and the grass is growing up so thick through there that it's grown over top of bricks, and you hardly need to walk along on bricks. Is there any legislation that, that involves that?
Well, again, the sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner, and we do have an ordinance that prohibits grass growing too high, but I don't think it's going to reach the eight inches that the ordinance addresses. Now, I guess we could supplement that ordinance by amending it to include sidewalks with grass growing in the middle, but if, if we would like to do that. But I don't think there's anything special addressing grass growing in the, in the bricks.
Well, do I have to remove the stove on the sidewalks? Am I, am I stuck?
Are you, are you speaking of the brick sidewalks themselves, or that little brick strip along?
I'm thinking the sidewalk, as far as the bricks go.
If you walked out through there, I don't exactly know what you're talking about. If you walked out through there, I couldn't understand why they put that brick in there at the beginning, but. at the beginning, because as soon as you do it, hereafter, you lay that brick, the grout part of it, it just fills with grass. It looks ugly. It's terrible to keep it up. Absolutely terrible, but he's got a point, it should be kept up.
Well, I guess we could write a letter asking the property owners to clean up the grass. If we don't have any ordinance to back it up, it's not going to do anything if they don't, but perhaps they would honor the letter if it came from our planning and zoning director. And if, and if that didn't work, then maybe we do need to put some kind of ordinance. So you would think that folks would have enough responsibility to maintain that, but I guess that's naive in thinking that.
I have a suggestion, I don't really know if I'll go over or not. When Jay was talking about this swimming pool, and, because I don't know the whole story behind the property line, I guess it's an alley, is it like an alley or something? You're talking about a property owner, and you know how people, is it crossing his property or this going down behind him?
A property goes behind all their properties, across his property. He owns like, there's a street, then the piece he owns next to the street, and the houses are perpendicular to that, so there's a spot that you could almost, looks like, looks like an alley, but there's no pavement, okay, it's all of my grass.
Anyway, what I was going to say was, those type of things, you have to make some kind of ruling for the whole town that affects, instead of going each time somebody calls about something or other?
Well, the problem with this is, the town used to own that. The part that they're complaining about, the piece that's between the street and this area, the city used to own that back in the 80s.
Well, but even before that, it was community property.
It was community property, so it was like homeowners association owned these pieces, and they let it do a tax sale, so the city bought it in the 80s, or I guess that's probably 80s, 90s. And then the city had it and said, we don't want it, so we're going to deed this to all the individual properties that are there. And so the end guy got the piece that was next to him, and it was never a problem, and now the new end guy, that said, hey, I don't want people going through my backyard. They can't get to their backyards without going through this.
But I mean, even the swimming pool, what has to be done, and all that backyard mess?
Right.
Couldn't it, couldn't we just make one?
We have rules for that, that's what they're violating.
It's the enforcement that we're worried about now.
The rules are there, they're already in place. They's violating the rules, we've got to enforce them.
Yeah, the first one's an enforcement problem. Think of police, but not police. The second one is just a messed up situation that the city was involved in at one time.
And my question is, what good is the health department if they're not going to do anything, write a letter? We could write a letter.
We did, and we were hoping that they would do something, since they have the thing, but they basically said, we don't follow up.
But the county has a new health director.
He's only been in since last Wednesday, so I'm not sure he'd be up to speed on any of that kind of stuff.
The letter from the health department, if it has to come to court, will certainly add credibility to our case.
Okay. But that's the other thing, right?
Right, we hope that they'll show up if we have to record, and they can test the body of that.
They can't complain to my district commissioner.
They, most people don't know this, but the Carroll County Commissioners are the Board of Health. Okay, just so you, I mean, I've had private situations where, if you have a problem with the health department, certain things can be appealed to the Board of Health, and the Carroll County Board of Health is the Carroll County Commissioner.
So in the state health department, you can't report it to the state health department?
They're the same type of, it depends on what it is, it's, yeah, it's two.
Most of the employees.
I think it comes down to the fact that's happening in our city is, we need to take the appropriate action on it, and I think that's where we are at this point.
Yep, you're exactly right, Brad.
Yeah, with the health department, the new guy, he had to be approved by two organizations. The Carroll County Commissioners had to approve his position, and the state had to approve his position, because it's sort of like a quasi-organization between the two. Most of the people that work for the health department are state employees.
It's not easy. Carl?
One more question on that pool, I don't know if you have a notion on this, but I haven't seen it, so I don't know. But that thing hasn't turned itself into a biohazard, has it?
Well, I heard it is, but I don't.
Well, if it is, then we need to be very careful with it, because you've got neighborhood around that, so that has to be addressed.
I didn't get into the mechanics of what they're going to do. Somebody said, we need to pump it out, and I don't know where they pump it to.
I don't know if they want to be sending a road order to do that.
Yeah, that's going to be an issue. I'm really hopeful that they'll do it themselves when they're faced with this, but if it's abandoned, well, then we'll make sure it's done right.
But if they do it by pulling one side over?
Well.
But we would have to set standards that they have to adhere to if they're going to take care of it. In our letter, we'll explain, you need to take these precautions, and we will watch you like a hawk.
And I mean, I guess, part of me is that if you all are supportive of taking these types of steps, then I will get engaged, I'm about half-engaged in this, because if it's just letters going out, they don't need me, but if we're really going to do something, then I'm going to go look and find out all these answers, so.
And there are no laws, Jay, about these kind of underground moves?
Oh, yeah, there are laws, and they.
And they're still broken, aren't they?
Well, of course. The laws are for the honest people.
Okay, what else? Anyone? Here, nothing, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. See you Monday.